Welcome to December 21st, 2020, meeting of Gaston County Board of Education. I am Jeff Ramsey, Member-at-Large and Chairman of the Board. We wish everyone a safe holiday, and I just want to say personally, thank you for your dedication and flexibility through this pandemic, and we appreciate everything y'all do for us. Our first order of business is to have our prayer and pledge of allegiance to the flag. I would like to ask Dr. Booker to lead us in the invocation and the pledge.
Thank you. Let us pray. Ah, Father God, thank you for everyone that is here today, for each mind and heart that fill the presence of this room. We thank you. Only you can see in perfect detail the end of every beginning, every project, every season, every life. Nothing is ever in vain, for even mistakes and missteps are used by you for good for all. Your righteousness, Lord, transcends all of the efforts and understanding for all. Strengthen our confidence in who you have made us to be. Set us free from comparison in order to work together efficiently for the good of all. Bless this meeting today, all those present, as well as all those who are affected by the outcome and all that we will encounter afterwards. Ready us to make every moment count. We ask all of this in thy precious holy name. Amen.
Please stand and join.
To the class of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Dr. Booker. Our next order of business is to adopt the agenda. You have the proposed agenda before you, Ms. Cherry.
My question and request.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, signify your right hand. Thank you. That's unanimous, Ms. Clerk. Our next order of business is to hear good news happening in our schools. Dr. Booker, share the good news with us today.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. We have a lot of good news, and I hope many of you have seen that we were able to recognize our five outstanding educators who have been chosen for the Gaston County Teacher of the Year 2021-2022 competition. They are Savannah Abernathy, Bessemer City Central Elementary, Natalie Childers, Gardner Park Elementary, Bethany Hartley, Hunter Huss High School, Casey Miller, Stanley Middle School, and Stacy Nezon from Pine Wood Elementary. The winner will be announced this spring during our annual Evening of Excellence program, and we are proud to announce that Truist Bank will be our new sponsor for that, and we appreciate their willingness to support the school system. We were able to surprise our finalists with dropping in on their schools and even two by video, and just we'll have those announcements on Channel 21 in the coming week. You know that our district depends on our community and all of its support, and we would like to recognize and thank members of the Cramerton Community Committee for their recent contribution to our schools. The committee worked with McAdenville Elementary School to have students create special holiday cards, then the members delivered the cards to residents of Mayworth School Apartments and Elmcroft Assisted Living Center. Additionally, cards were presented to residents who were served by Local Meals on Wheels Program. The committee also worked to provide over 600 masks for students at New Hope Elementary and McAdenville Elementary, and they're working to provide additional masks for Page Primary and Belmont Central Elementary. We just wanted to pause and thank this community group for their efforts and recognize many community groups that continue to support our schools. And our schools give back. We are a big employer in this community, so we're a big part of United Way. And so, this season of caring, we would like to bring attention to all the work our schools did in November for the United Way campaign. Last year, we were one of the leaders of the campaign with over $94,000 pledged by our employees. You would think this year, with the financial hardship of families and just all the disruption in our community, our pledge may be challenged, but it's with great pride and appreciation to our schools and the leadership and all of our employees that I get to tell you, they have pledged $93,000 again this year. So I think that is, just talks about who our employees are. This next one was one that was a great surprise to me and a neat personal point of pride for Cherville High School. Their athletics department earned Level One status on the National Federation of State High School Association's honor roll. This national program is designed to promote professional development for high school coaches who have an opportunity to complete online education courses through National Federation of High Schools Learning Center. Cherville is the only school in Gaston County to earn this certification year, and only one of 33 in the state of North Carolina. I just want to thank Scott Harold, the school's athletic director, and for his leadership with all the coaches at Cherville High School for their commitment, not only in athletics, but in the academics and their own professional development. Over the past several months, we've had the honor of watching Pisgah ARP Church contribute grants to classroom teachers, art teachers, and media specialists in various Gaston County schools. This is part of their Kenley Estate Scholarship Funds, and I just want you to realize, they have given over $52,000. So I would really just like to pause and thank Pisgah ARP for their commitment to our school system and reaching all different levels of our educators. There are a few shout-outs that I'd like to close with. First, to Hunter Huss High School, Julie Ballard and Heaven Watson Weary for their efforts to organize a fine arts presentation that was featured recently on the North Carolina Public Schools Facebook page. It was a great honor for our district and a lot of creative work on their behalf. I want to congratulate Kentabe Heights Elementary Teacher Dana Ritchie, who received a Bright Ideas Education Grant that was presented by Rutherford Electric. Third, I would like to recognize Jared Friday, who is a Forest View High School Athletic Trainer, who was selected to serve as a trainer for the 2021 Shrine Bowl, Carolina's Football Game. All of these are great recognition of the folks working in our district. I talked about our employees giving back to the United Way. Well, here I'll close with WC Friday Middle School, who collected over 2,500 cans of food for the charities in the Dallas area, and the students made Christmas cards that were sent to military personnel serving overseas and also distributed to residents at the Stanley Town Total Living Center. So this is an example of the Leadership Academy that is housed there and them being leaders in our community. All of that, I think, sir, is great news. So thank you for allowing me to share that news with you and the public tonight.
Dr. Booker, thanks for sharing all these good news. It just tells you how good Gaston County is, giving back to others in need.
Excuse me, please. Mr. Chair, since we are experiencing some difficulty with sound, would you try to speak a bit louder, please?
Yes, ma'am, and I think Tom is working on that, but I will speak louder.
Thank you.
I'll leave it up.
Thank you. I'm aware of that. Thank you.
Okay. Our next item on the agenda is the opportunity for public expression. We do have one individual signed up, Lauren Freidy. This time, when the Board will hear comments from citizens about the matter of public concerns related to the school system, our Board sets aside 30 minutes of regular monthly meeting of citizens to address the Board. Even though our meeting is this afternoon being held virtually, our Board wanted to find a way to allow individuals to hear in person rather than just sending an email. So we have tried to limit the number of presence and instead opened up the boardroom to permit person public expression from as many as possible in 30 minutes allowed. And let me read this before we get started. Citizens wishing to make comments who have completed a request to speak form will be recognized by the Chair and then requested step to the microphone for their comments. Citizens will state their name and address for the record. Comments will be limited to three minutes. The members of the Board do not comment on public expression during public expressions. Public expression does not allow for comments on confidential personnel matters. The Chair will rule on all points ordered during the expression. So welcome, and you can step up to the mic, Ms. Freidy.
My name is Lauren Freidy, South Point High School, Class of 2013. I live in Belmont, and I'm here today to speak on behalf of Retire the Red Raider. In my time at South Point, I received a woefully incomplete education on Indigenous peoples, their history, and their current standing as sovereign nations. I learned the tomahawk chop, when I should have learned that the term "red" when used in reference to natives has its roots in the murder of Indigenous people whose bloody scalps-coined red skins were sold for a bounty. I watched Dances with Wolves in class, when I should have been taught about the history of the freedmen, the history of the multiple civil rights movements led by and for Indigenous people. I learned that the Trail of Tears in the boarding schools happened, but not how many lives were lost in the process of both these examples of genocidal U.S. policy, nor the traumatic generational impact it has had on those who descended from its survivors. I learned that the Trail of Tears was the end of Native people, relegating them to fixtures of the past, when I should have learned that their history and culture are ongoing today, as is continued systemic oppression and Native resistance and resilience. I learned stereotypes, racial slurs, and mockery as normalized facts at South Point High School. Most students only get this biased, anemic narrative that South Point teaches, that the Red Raider mascot alone teaches. This is what students are learning right now, and that fact alone is reprehensible. Are you here to ensure that students in Gaston County get the comprehensive education they deserve, or are you here to uphold the status quo and sit comfortably while Native students are actively harmed and non-Native students are taught ignorance as fact? Since June of this year, our group has been presenting evidence to the school board that American Indian mascots have harmful psychosocial effects on youth and create a hostile learning environment. You have every letter, email, policy brief, and petition we have sent you. You have chosen to ignore every statement from Native leaders, every letter from Native organizations, and every invitation we have sent you to educational events where you could have learned more. It has been six months of silence. It is the responsibility of the Gaston County School Board to review and address its Native American mascots and has been since at least 2002, when the State Board of Education directed all LEAs to do so. This Board has completely abdicated its responsibility to the public and even more disappointingly to students, that you do not even respond to repeated letters, emails, and public comments as neglectful, cowardly, and embarrassing. We have followed every proper channel to be placed on the agenda, and you have ignored us. We are asking for at least one of you to have the courtesy and commitment to your elected purpose to put the Red Raider issue on the agenda. Our children are waiting and watching. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments, which would continue concern Gaston County schools. Although the Board does not typically respond during the period for public comment, we do want to hear from the public and direct staff to work on those issues that needed to be addressed. Thank you for your comments. The next item is on the agenda.
Mr. Chair, if I may ask, could we take a brief break to, I'm getting
Feedback.
Feedback and notes from some of our board members that they're having difficulty hearing on Zoom. So if we could take a break to give our technician time to try and reset?
Okay, let's take a five or 10-minute recess break and then come back.
Thank you, sir.
Next item on the agenda is approve the correction of the minutes. This item is on action. I need a motion to approve the minutes for November 16th, 2020. Ms. Cherry, second. Mr. Moore, any discussion? All in favor, signify your right hand. Thank you. Okay, the next item is Curriculum Instruction Committee Report. Doc Guthrie, Chair.
Vice President, Chair, Cherry will make that report.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Guthrie. We had a meeting on December 7th of this year. The meeting was called to order at 10:21 a.m. As usual, it was an excellent meeting. In attendance were Doc Guthrie, Doc Cherry, Justin Davis, and Robbie Lovelace was sitting in with us. Minutes were approved unanimously with no corrections for our meeting of November 9th. Staff presented information on how the districts are merging instruction toward digital convergence. Gaston Blended utilizes digital platforms and resources to support personalized learning for students. Sorry, my glasses are fogging up. We're focusing on six major areas. District leadership is organizing the components of blended learning to ensure equitable support for all students. Fall semester final exams will be administered the week of December 14th, 2020, which y'all knew. Students are required to, by the state, to take CTE and state exams in the buildings. Principals are working with families to have concerns about the students being in the building. Teacher-made exams do not have the same requirements. We adjourned our meeting at 11:40. The next committee meeting is tentatively scheduled for January 11th at the central office at 12:00 noon, and that's my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Cherry. Next on the agenda is acceptance of the June 30th, 2020 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, and I'll call on Gary Hoskin, and this is a action item.
Good afternoon, Chairman Ramsey, Vice Chair Cherry, members of the Board, Superintendent Booker. We are here today to request approval of our June 30th, 2020 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. We also call it the CAFR. Copy is right here. This was sent out to each of the Board members in their board packages on Friday. So first of all, I do want to thank everyone in the Finance Department that helped put this together, also the assistance that we received from our Communications Department, Gaston County Finance Department, and our audit firm, Anderson Smith &amp; Weick. However, I want to give a special thank you to our accounting manager, Delane Loftus. She is the primary person that helped put this together. We do have with us Vince Quinn. He is an auditor with Anderson Smith &amp; Weick. Anderson Smith &amp; Weick does the audits for probably half of the school systems in North Carolina. Mr. Quinn has been working with Gaston County schools for over 20 years. He's a good resource for us. He lives in Gaston County, graduated from Gaston County Schools, children went to Gaston County Schools, so a great resource for us to have here. So, Mr. Quinn?
Thank you, Gary. I appreciate you letting me come and say a few words about the CAFR for this year. First thing I like to always do, I always like to point out on pages, Roman numeral pages 16 and 17, these are the certificates that were given for the excellence for the June 30th, 2019 financial statements. I always like to point that out. Gary, do you know how many years that this has been that you've gotten this?
One of them was since 1993, and the other one since 1997.
Yeah, so this is a longstanding award, and I think I've said it before while I've been here, that Gaston County's, I see a lot of them, Gaston County's looks the most professional of any one that I do see. So, then if I was just going to turn to page one behind the financial tab, if you have that, that is our opinion on the financial statements. As you can see there, the management's responsibility for the financial statements is the fair presentation of those financial statements. Our responsibility as auditor is to give opinions on those financial statements and to make sure that we have completed sufficient auditing procedures to allow us to give that opinion. On the bottom of the page one there, it talks about our opinion, and it says, "Our opinion, we believe these financial statements present fairly the financial information contained in there." If we could turn to page 16, if you have your book, that is the balance sheet for all governmental funds, and I always just like to point out, in the general, first column there, the general fund, always make note of the fund balance for the year. The total fund balance is $6,106,000. The unassigned fund balance for the year is $4,851,000. And if you look on page 17, that is the statement of revenues and expenditures and changes in fund balance. In that first column for general, you can see there was a net increase to that fund, overall fund balance of $1,310,000 for the year-end in June 30th, 2020. One of the other items I always like to point out is the statement of revenues and expenditures and changes in fund balance related to the proprietary fund, and your proprietary fund is your child nutrition fund. That is found on page 23. As this shows, there was a decrease in the net position of $3,266,000 for the year. Child nutrition programs all around the state had hard years, obviously, with the situations that were going on when they had to stop and the meals served. So that is not something that is out of the ordinary for the rest of the child nutrition programs within the state. Behind the statistical section, that's really the only items I want to point out in the financial statement, the statistical section is full of information of 10-year data for the financial information for the school board that is accumulated by Gary and his department and Delane. I would just like to say that I do always appreciate the way the Finance Department gets the information to me, the way that when I work with the different programs, as far as the compliance programs, how attentive they are to get me the information that I need. That makes my job so much easier, and I would like to thank all of them. And then I would also like to thank the Board for giving us this opportunity for us to continue to provide this service to the Board. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
Do you want to add any questions?
Mr. Chair, thank you. Just a couple of comments. Gary and to the Finance Department, kudos. This is just incredible to continue to get these awards of excellence, and I've been here a long time, as you know, and it's just fascinated me how we've continued to carry on this excellence we have in our finance reporting. Mr. Quinn, I probably asked you this last year, but if you don't mind if you answer it again, can you help tell us why school systems' fund balance is such a significantly small percentage in comparison to their budget versus, say, municipal or county's fund balance, which have the, you know, five and six times a higher percentage of fund balance than we do with schools?
Yes, the primary reason is they consider the revenue streams for the taxing authority or the taxing entities to be not as predictable as the school board revenue stream from the state and the county. However, you know that there are issues from time to time with funding related to county issues and other issues through the state. So that fund balance does, you know, does pose an issue or can pose an issue. I think you're okay at this point, but that is the primary reason that the school systems' fund balance percentage is always so much lower than a county or a city.
Okay, thank you.
Vance, it's good to see you, and thank you for the efficiency of explaining the report. My question is about the fund balance, too. Where do you see us at a comfortable point with fund balance? I'm glad that we were able to increase it a little bit, and I have no problem taking, I know we took away from it a few years ago to supplement our teacher pay, and to me, that was an extremely good investment. But where would you like us to be? Are we in a good place?
You know, it's hard to say. Like I say, I think the taxing authorities, they like to say 8% to 12% of the expenditures out of the general fund is what they like to have on hand. Yours is, there's several different ways to look at it, because you have a certain amount, you just have general expenditures, but you receive state and federal funding. Those amounts do not have any fund balances, and you really have to carry those other, all the operations of the school system out of the general fund. So you have to kind of take those expenditures into account, too. Your unassigned fund balance is about 2% for this year. That's up from last year, 1.6. That's probably in the ballpark of where y'all have been for a number of years. You know, I kind of always equate it to what financial people like to have on, they want you to have at least a month's expenditures on hand to have, and that's what the 8% to 12% comes from, from the counties and the cities. So it's hard to say from a school board, I will give them a little bit that the revenue streams are a little bit more predictable, but as I said, there was several years ago when state budget came in in March and said, "You can't spend any more money." So that was a number of years ago when the state was going through some hard times, but it does happen, and you had to rely on your fund balance in that point.
Yeah, we are very close to what our, the state peer group is with the fund balance to revenues percentage.
Well, I know we're in a lot better shape than a lot of other districts, so thanks, Gary. Y'all do a great job.
Mr. Dedman?
Yes, sir. Our schools, it's amazing. Thank goodness that our county commissioners are willing to work with us and also on our bond issue, the citizens of Gaston County, but we really need to pick up our speed and see if we can replace some of these older schools, just a thought. But when you get a chance to look at it, '84 and '85, you'll be amazed at how old our buildings are.
Well, just a comment, I totally agree with you, Mr. Chairman, but on the positive side, we build them good and we build them right when we build them, so.
Anyone else?
Well, I will say this, we didn't build Belmont. Nobody was alive when Belmont was built. Somebody built it really well.
Any other questions or comments before we take action? Mr. Collier?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to accept the CAFR report for the 2020 fiscal year, our year 2020.
Second, Mr. Dedman, any discussions? All in favor, signify your right hand. That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
All right, next on the item is High School Choice Program, revised entry criteria, and that's Denise McLean. Ms. McLean?
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Ramsey, Vice Chairman Cherry, members of the Board, and Superintendent Dr. Booker. At this time, I will share my screen. Okay, thank you for this opportunity to share information about our school choice programs. This is always an exciting time of the year as we approach school choice season, the window of time to accept applications and ultimately the lottery. This year, due to COVID-19 restrictions, we've not been able to have or hold our choice fairs. However, working with our communications department and our school leaders, you will see additional information on Channel 21, on social media, and on school websites promoting our programs. on social media, and on school websites promoting our programs. Well, I did not advance. Okay, let's try it here. Let's see. Okay. However, this evening, we will provide updates of our existing programs. We will highlight our newest choi- choice programs, update you on the entrance criteria, and conclude by presenting a timeline of the application activities for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year. So the first choice program update is the Karamot Health Sciences Academy at East Gaston High School. Next year, they will offer six pathway programs. The Nutrition Food Service Professional Training Program has been eliminated as Gaston College no longer offers that program. Therefore, the remaining programs that will be offered will be the Foundations of Healthcare, the Foundations of Animal Science, the Foundations of Health and Fitness Science, the Foundations of Medical Assisting, the Nursing Assistant Program, and finally Pharmacy Tech. In addition, Rising Juniors must also meet the CCP requirements to take any of the pathway courses. And this requires a two-point-eight GPA or to meet the performance requirements on any college readiness assessment. Next is an update with the Leadership Academy, which is located at North Gaston High School. Gaston College has aligned pathway courses that will lead to a Certificate of Leadership Studies. Uh, beginning the fall of two thousand twenty-one, juniors will start taking these courses. Um, they include an Introduction to Leadership, Introduction to Ethics, Writing and Inquiry, and Principles of Management. Again, this will lead to a Certificate of Leadership that students will find very helpful as they are seeking employment upon graduation. Finally, Gaston College is now offering a Teacher Prep Associates of Arts Program or Degree. The students in the Teacher Cadet Program at Cherrville High School will be able to take the pathway courses offered through Gaston College. While this is not a certificate program, if students do complete the pathway classes, it eliminates one year from their Associate's Degree Program at Gaston College. So, and again, this will start fall of two thousand twenty-one, so that's another exciting opportunity. So for our new choice programs, um, for the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year, the I Accelerate Academy Program opened at Ashbrook High School. We're excited about the inaugural year and the program as we had ninth and tenth grade students that started this program. We've worked together with Gaston College to coordinate our first cohort of students starting college classes this spring, with more to follow in the fall of two thousand twenty-one. As the legislation for College and Career Promise Program has evolved, we've had to adjust our processes as well. Um, this program is a college transfer pathway, and it does require the completion of at least thirty uh semester hours of transfer courses, including English and Mathematics to earn that Associate's Degree. Eligibility requirements for the Gaston College CCP for classes are, for juniors and seniors, they must have that unweighted GPA of two-point-eight on their high school courses, and they must demonstrate college readiness in English, reading, and mathematics on their approved assessments. For any of our freshmen and sophomores, they have to be identified by local AIG planned, uh, as AIG gifted, um, and also in reading and math, and also demonstrate college readiness in English, reading, and mathematics on an approved assessment. Now, while these standards are very rigorous, we plan to provide support and wraparound services to any of our stu- students that may struggle to meet those benchmarks outlined by the CCP program. All students will take part, part in college visits, college preparatory classes, participate in tutoring sessions, and hear special guest speakers regardless of their college readiness status. So introducing our new magnet um program, which will open fall of two thousand twenty-one, and that is the Gaston Early College of Medical Sciences. Housed in the Dallas campus of Gaston College, it will be located in the CET building, the Computer Engineering Technology Building. Um, basically, this is the first floor of that building, and it will be completely dedicated to the Gaston Early College Medical Science students. This is a change from what was originally proposed. Um, the Gaston College Medical Science Program had been planned to be located on the Kimbrel Campus in Belmont. However, due to renovations and the expansion of the tech tower program there of the Kimbrel Campus, we've had to shift our location to the Dallas Campus. One advantage to this program is that students will be physically closer to the existing Gaston College's Health Sciences Program, and also allow them an opportunity to participate in, in those simulation and uh equipment and, and use any lab space that's there in their healthcare setting, in their classrooms. So Gaston College plans to build a new Medical Sciences Complex on the Dallas Campus within about five years. And the Gaston Early College of Medical Sciences Program will be moved to that location at that time, once the building is complete. The program will feature four pathways, Health Science, Technology, Biomedical Sciences, and Associate in General Education for Nursing and Human Services. Students will be able to take these pathway programs in four years and with a five-year option for the Human Services Program, and that will lead to an Associate's Degree. Students admitted for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year um will include eighty ninth graders, and that's twenty students per pathway, eighty sophomores. And again, this will just be for the first year. Uh, for the subsequent years, only freshman students will be admitted each year. Um, consideration will be given to admitting students at the start of their sophomore year, just to help maintain those cohort numbers. Another advantage is that students will be able to share buses um with Highland School of Technology and the Gaston Early College High School, which will be a huge savings in terms of transportation costs. So let's move forward and talk about some of the updated criteria. I prepared a chart for you that really outlines the criteria on the left-hand side, and then you see those uh high school programs across the top, and the check mark indicates if that is uh criteria for them. So of course, um, sticking with what we've always said, parents must be residents of Gaston County. Um, we're requiring that the sixth grade reading and math EOG scores be at least a level three, four, or five. Um, seventh grade overall C or minimum of seventy average for first semester performance only. And if you look under the Collegiate Prep Program for um Forest View, they're using an eighth grade overall B average or eighty minimum average for first semester coursework. And also for I Accelerate, theirs is again seventh grade overall average, but it's a B in the seventh grade as opposed to eighth grade. Finally, um, looking at seventh and eighth grade I Ready Diagnostic Assessments. Last year, we were not able to do our spring testing, so we don't have spring EOG scores. So we're going to go back and look at the I Ready Diagnostic Assessments to help um give principals some additional information in making decisions about students. AIG qualified in both reading and math or the willingness to be tested, and that doesn't apply to any of the programs except for the I Accelerate Academy. And again, that's due largely due to the legislation um governing the CCP programs and the tr- College Transfer Program. And then being good standing with conduct for seventh grade, and again, that's for all of our programs. Good standing with attendance in seventh grade, again, medical exceptions will be considered. And finally, all applicants must meet the deadline of submitting their application by February twenty-eighth of two thousand twenty. So that's an update on the criteria. And finally, as we move into the application timeline, uh, another chart that's prepared for you. And uh, this again pretty much follows what we have done in the past. The center column highlights what currently was done last year, and then the right side are the proposed dates. So we've already started work on this by submitting, having schools submit their applications so that it can be uploaded into the scribbles platform for parents to make application. Um, again, our accountability department is working with our schools, and they've already provided the data on the I Ready diagnostic materials so that again, principals will have that to work with um, or making decisions about students being ready for the programs. The application window, we did move the date back this year to January fifteenth, and that's due to just the changing of the semester and uh things being a little different. We didn't want to rush into it, but want to give principals and schools time to evaluate the data and make sure that they are ready to start accepting those applications. So that timeline starts January fifteenth and will end the last of February as it always does. Um, applicant eligibility verification window, again, we extended this, this year ju- just giving schools a little bit more time to really evaluate applications and, and not have to rush, but this allows them to make those final eligibility verifications, give applicants' parents an opportunity to appeal, and then for the schools to come back and make those final uh appeal decisions. So we did extend that window. Um, the lottery applicant list will be submitted to our vendor on March the twenty-sixth. Our lottery date, and this is a pushback a little bit than what it typically is, is April first this year. And the final applicant eligibility window will really kind of rest at June thirtieth. That's parents and students will know exactly if, if they made it into the lottery. And again, that's going to be based on um EOG end-of-year testing information. And then finally, that deadline for uh parents to make their decisions about the choice program um has to rest by July twenty-eighth because schools will have to finalize schedules and make sure that they are prepared to um have things ready for the start of the school year. And at this time, that concludes my presentation.
Ms. McLean, just thank you for all the expansion of school choice. I think our parents and students love the opportunity they have, and I think we have a lot of good comments and questions coming up. Does anybody want to start? Ms. Cherry?
Ms. McLean, I'm, I'm glad that everything's all in one nice neat little bundle now. I think that that's going to be a lot more seamless for uh all of our families that, that want to, to get into our choice programs and, and uh that the process will be a lot, ooh, excuse me, smoother. So, great job and, and uh appreciate all the work that y'all have done to, to get that all organized.
Thank you.
Ms. Hall?
Oh, sorry.
Ms. Guthrie, go ahead. We hadn't had, go ahead, Ms. Guthrie.
I truly liked what I heard uh regarding the um, the progress that's been made. I wanted to ask, based on um the recommendations, will we take the input from teachers that are doing remote uh teaching as well as the in-person in order to make a decision as to whom would be uh considered for admissions?
Well, I know that we will look heavily on the criteria that's outlined. And I think if you think about the criteria, it does really using several data points. Um, the I Ready data, the uh grades from students, um, the EOG scores that will come in, and I think all of that will be a, a good telltale sign in terms of how successful a student potentially can be in any of the programs that are um outlined. So again, not just using one data point, but using multiple data points should give us a, a good idea in terms of how students will be successful.
And you did mention behavior too, and I wanted, uh, I was interested in knowing, you know, like we have some students that are remote learners, and then of course, we have students that are in-person and, you know, uh, to look at that criteria too, I didn't know how that would take place.
Yes, ma'am. And one thing that usually happens when the school, student um presents information to the school, if there is ever a, a question about a student being, um, their conduct and their participation is worthy of being questioned, the principal can always contact the middle school and get some additional clarification or input just to be able to make a decision um on that student. So they do have that opportunity to contact the middle school.
Thank you.
Ms. Hall?
Yes, ma'am. I was uh, I was wondering about Carr Elementary, is that going to be integrated into the leadership program?
Uh, Ms. McLean, they are already in the leadership program, and we do both Costner and Carr as part of the leadership program. What we have not done is offer any choice seats at Carr due to the capacity of Carr and the continued growth in that community. But the students enrolled in Carr do participate in the leadership program.
I just didn't see them on the list, so.
Yes, sir. That's why they're not li- on the list, because you couldn't make an application as a out-of-district student for Carr.
Thank you.
And may I say one more thing about the speaking of Carr and the leadership? I think that is a fantastic way to monitor a student's uh progress through school. You start with the leadership there in the elementary levels, and you move on and on. So that is the part of the win-win for uh the leadership, and I, I, I love that idea. I think that's just fantastic.
And thank you, Ms. Guthrie. And part of what, and I appreciate that Mr. Hall brought it up, what we wanted to make sure was that the schools feeding into WC Friday, which is, you know, key to the leadership program that feeds into North Gaston, that all those students, a sixth grader wouldn't arrive having never had that experience, even though Carr didn't have available seats for the choice. And Dr. Duncan and her staff have done a great job integrating the program.
Mr. Deven?
Yes, sir. First of all, Ms. McLean, good job on all this. Uh, the only question I have, are there any main differences in the criteria from last year to this year to get in any of our academies?
Um, I, let me go back and just to say, with each program, for instance, the um East Gaston, they now have the um, um, the grade point average because that wasn't there before. When you're moving up and you're taking the pathway courses through Gaston College, it requires a certain grade point average, so they're just trying to make sure that students are ready, and they're showing that they potentially have the ability to be successful in the, those programs. So that's the main um piece of criteria for all those programs that will um really allow students to take those pathway courses through CCP, and that's, that's a, a big shift.
Okay, anyone else?
Mr. Ramsey, I would like to piggyback on, Mr. Deven brings up a good point, but one thing that we all have to adjust to right now is that we don't have any EOC, EOG scores related for this rating. And so that's why the I Rated, I Ready data is being utilized to give us some baseline to do that on. So until we have EOGs and things like that, again, we'll have to do this. And you all are used to this adjustment. We've had to do that uh in previous years when the state didn't have a test up to date.
Well, the student benefits from that, so we appreciate that.
Ms. Cherry, you have something?
Ms. McLean, just to reiterate, you did say the scribbles is going to be in charge, and you know, taking, taking control of all the, all the lotteries going forward, right?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay, well, that, that's a change, is it not?
Uh, last year, we went to that platform. All the applications went through scribbles, and we'll do that again this year.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, thank you, Ms. McLean.
One more thing, will that be like a virtual, did you say that would be a virtual fair online for parents to visit?
Some of the, the schools will set that up. I think working with the communications department, they will work with them to publicize any virtual visits to their schools that will, that will occur. However, in terms of the actual lottery, it will be virtual as well, the way we did this past spring. Great, thank you.
Okay, any other comments before we? Okay, well, Ms. McLean, thank you for sharing that information with us, exciting news.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is the COVID nineteen update. I'll turn that over to Dr. Book- Booker.
Thank you, members of the board. We are fortunate again. We are fortunate, again, we talk a lot about partnerships, like good news, a great partnership that has really seen its strength be pulled together through COVID is our partnership with the Health Department, and we are fortunate tonight to have Steve Eaton, the Director of our Public Health Department, with us to go over and provide you update on COVID at this time. Mr. Eaton?
Great. Good evening, Chairman Ramsey, members of the School Board, and Dr. Booker. Thank you again for having me this evening. Again, my name is Steve Eaton, I'm the Public Health Director for Gaston County Department of Health and Human Services, and it's a pleasure to be here tonight. Tonight, I'm going to present to you an updated data set since the last time I was with you in October. The data pertains to the school age population as well as faculty, and these numbers that you're going to see tonight represent all schools in Gaston County, not just public schools, but public, private, and charter. We're going to look at the data from from both the total number of cases, total number tested, and percent positive in relation to the total number tested, also known as the positivity rate. So with that said, and to what Dr. Booker just mentioned, Public Health and Gaston County School Leadership continue to work very, very closely together on a daily basis, and we've been doing so since the beginning of the pandemic on all areas related to to the coronavirus, from prevention, contact investigation, and contact tracing. I continue to be, and I want to stress this, I continue to be very impressed and humbled by the work of the teachers, the faculty, students, and leadership in the midst of this one-hundred-year pandemic. The work that that the school system is doing is phenomenal, and and it's a it's a pleasure to work alongside you all and the and the folks within the school system. But before I start tonight, I want to give a little bit of a county context to what we're seeing with regards to to COVID nineteen. Daily new cases in our county, we're seeing the highest surge that we've seen in daily new cases since the start of the pandemic. And just to put that a little bit in perspective, in August and September, we were seeing roughly forty to fifty new daily cases per day. Since November twentieth, we're averaging one hundred and fifty daily new cases per day, which is about three times where what we were seeing this summer. And then when we talk about the positivity rate, we're also seeing an increase in daily new cases in relation to the total number of tested, and this increase in the positivity rate is occurring while we're testing more than we ever have been before in Gaston County. So it's showing that penetration of the virus within our community, which is showing a greater transmission rate. So our current positivity rate as of today was fifteen point eight-one percent, almost sixteen percent, and where we'd like to see this metric is around five percent. So again, we're well over three times where we should be with regards to positivity rate. And what I'm explaining to you tonight is not unique to just Gaston, I do want to emphasize this, this is statewide. We are seeing an exponential growth in COVID throughout all of North Carolina, so I do want to preface that. With regards to hospitalizations, the number of those hospitalized continues to increase as well. We they're seeing a surge that they have not seen since the start of the pandemic. So with this daily surge of new cases and the positivity rate in our county, it's an unfortunate but not really unexpected outcome that we're seeing. So, starting in August sixteenth, we saw an increase in the number of cases among faculty, staff, and students, and then a leveling through September. When you look at the numbers of where we were the week of November twenty-second through the twenty-eighth, which was the week of Thanksgiving, there was eighty-six cases. You'll see that we've nearly doubled that the first and second week of December, and we do have a little bit of a lag time in our reporting of the positives because that allows the opportunity for test results to come in, which I'm sure you all know there's a lag time in that data. And and we expect these numbers to continue to increase the rest of this month as we get, and like I said, receive more test results and log those into the system. So when we look at the percent positive for the ages five to eleven, the red bar that you'll see is the total number of positive cases for that week, and the blue bar is the total number tested. So as you can see with ages five to eleven, testing has greatly increased in this population since early November, as has the percent positive, with more results coming in and from recent testing. And the current positivity rate in the ages five to eleven is currently at seventeen point four-five percent. Similarly to the five to eleven population, we're seeing a significant increase in the positivity rate of the twelve to eighteen population. The current positivity for this rate is twenty-three point seventeen percent, which is, again, more than a double what we were seeing a month ago. So let's start with looking at this and start with the staff determined to be contacts of a positive. So in October, and that's that bottom blue identifier there in the in the chart, in October, there was two hundred and twenty-eight staff who were determined to be true contacts, one hundred and ninety-six in November, and as of December, we've seen two hundred and sixty-two. Staff who've tested positive in October and were deemed true COVID nineteen positive, in October, there were seventy-five staff, in November, there were eighty staff, and in December, there's been eighty-two staff. And then when we look at students, again, contact-wise, those who are deemed to be contacts of a positive, three hundred and ninety-seven in October, and then that jumped to five hundred and fifty-seven in November, and we stand at three hundred and seventy-two for December. And then lastly, students who've tested positive, there was one hundred and seventy-four in October, two hundred and forty-four true positives in November, and two hundred and twenty-eight in December. And just real quickly, when looking at faculty and staff hospitalizations, September, October, November, and December, we've seen four to five per month. This side shows the progression of positives across the age strata, beginning when the pandemic began. You'll note the small percent of positive in zero in the zero to seventeen age strata in the beginning at two point two-seven percent, with that group increasing over time to now twelve point four-seven percent. We've also noted over time with the pandemic, the demographics of those testing positive has also begun to reflect a truer breakdown of our community demographics, which, again, highlights the the broad spread and transmission of the virus. And lastly, when we look at pediatric cases, and by pediatric, I mean birth to eighteen, the age strata of five to nine, five to nine makes up twenty percent of the pediatric cases in Gaston County, ten to fourteen makes up twenty-eight percent of pediatric cases, and then fifteen to eighteen comprises thirty-seven percent of positive pediatric cases. Gender is split evenly, fifty percent, fifty percent, and with regards to race and ethnicity, fifty-one percent are white, nineteen percent are African-American, and twenty-three percent of our pediatric cases are Hispanic or Latinx. So we do see racial disparities here in in that African-Americans make up seventeen percent of our Gaston County population and are reflected here in nineteen percent of pediatric positives, and Hispanics or the Latinx community makes up seven percent of our population, but here are reflected at twenty-three percent positive. And then that final bar, I'm sorry, if you'll go back real quick, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. If you look at that bottom chart there, that takes you through the total six, one thousand six hundred ninety-one pediatric cases since the start of the pandemic, so you'll see that growth really, again, coming out of July, we started to come down in August and September, and then moving into fall, November, December, again, much like what was anticipated in terms of coming into the colder season, holiday seasons, we begin to see that increase. So moving forward, we'll continue to watch the the data closely for the school age population, continue to to look at the data, translate, translate the data on our weekly call with the school system leadership, and we'll continue to discuss and and monitor all these trends and scenarios moving forward, especially coming out of the Christmas holidays, which, again, from a public health perspective, the concern, again, remains that we try the best we can as a community to avoid what's called a surge on top of a surge. So the numbers that you saw climb post-Thanksgiving, we're working really hard as a community to drive those back down, but then obviously, we're heading into the Christmas holiday season where families will begin potentially gathering together again, and then we have New Year's following on a Friday, so we have a long weekend, so we'll really begin watching those trends closely through that time period and be reporting that to to school leadership. And that concludes my report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you for your report. Mr. Booker, you had, oh, you didn't want, okay. So now it's time for questions or comments.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Collier?
I was a little bit shocked to see that the positive rate for teachers, if I saw that chart right, just increased two, and positive rate for students actually went down after November. That was a little, that was a surprise I didn't expect to see, was actually a fall in student positive rates and just an increase of two after the Thanksgiving break. I I just want to say that this is a difficult year, and going forward, I've decided there is no right decision. But I'm convinced that i- if we're diligent, and that's the key word, is if we're diligent, we can minimize the spread within our bubbles, what I call our bubbles are our contact areas with this virus, and that's, again, as everybody knows, is wearing the face mask, which is vital and key, social distancing, sanitizing your hands, and getting a temperature check, just just like when we walk in here in this board meeting. I I feel a sense of comfort and safety with all the protocol that we do here, but it's it's an effort and diligence, and our teachers and our staff have been incredible. I mean, our custodians, everybody up and down the list have have just been incredible. What we can't do is control what happens outside the school. With that said, you know, I'm just going, these are Kevin's comments, and I'm just going to say that our children are falling behind. This remote learning, especially in elementary, is is taking its toll on our children's education. Nothing replaces in-person instruction, especially in elementary education, and and our our children are really suffering as a consequence of that. Our teachers and I think anybody in education acknowledged and realized the same thing. Our fight and struggle has, how do we do it and keep our staff and employees safe? We've been doing this, you know, we've we've been fighting this thing, and and I'm going to go back to say that I believe our, the the secret to minimizing the spread of this thing is is the diligence in following what the CDC has always said. And and we may have to even step up those causes because I know people get lax. I was out today and I see people, more and more people getting lax about these things. And being indoors, I I understand why the the increase is there, and I it's, as Mr. Eaton said, it's not unexpected. But with that said, I I think we, as our board, and whatever we can do to get our teachers in the front of the line for the vaccine is something that I think we need to get done, because we need to get them back in front of our children. I'd like to see us stay with the instruction plan that we have now, and I'd like to see us as soon as possible move to four days a week as soon as we can. If we start seeing vaccines and and other things put in place to where we can get these children back in front of teachers, I'm not going to put timelines or any demands of time on any of that stuff, but these are things that we've got to do, and and I think with combination with vaccines and due diligence, I I think our system has proven we can do that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else?
In fact, if I could, Mr. Chair, I want to share a couple more clarifying things.
Ma'am, Mr. Chair, I would like for the superintendent to speak before I make my
Oh, that's actually what he's getting ready to.
Thank you, Ms. Guthrie. Thank you. You know, as Mr. Collier just touched on, we currently are operating in a hybrid model, and when you look at that model, seventy-three point five percent of our students are attending school in the hybrid model, and twenty-three, twenty-six point five percent are in the totally virtual Plan C. And thinking back, you all made this decision when only one other large district in the state of North Carolina opened up, and we have maintained this throughout this time, but it hasn't been without a lot of effort. To our knowledge, we're the only district that still has bus monitors checking temperatures before kids get on buses. That is an incredible amount of work and dedication by the staff that are riding those buses, by the administrators that are managing the workload so that we can do that. But the Health Department and our leadership team working together felt it was critical to operating safely. When you think about masks, to date, we have distributed over two hundred thousand masks throughout our ranks. The social distancing in our classrooms, our folks work diligently, they, some have taped off areas, some have had to adjust, and and to see that, it's really impressive. And when you talk about deep cleaning, we have used over ten thousand gallons of hand sanitizer in the first semester of school. We've also used over ten thousand gallons of the related chemicals for the Wednesday when we do the deep cleanings. And on PP and E, we have tried to meet individual requests for things, and one example of that is over thirty thousand pairs of gloves have been distributed in this first semester. But through it all, we've also seen some really neat things. Our our school nutrition has served over two million meals, and just today, we started giving out boxes for people who had said, I would like a meal over the break, and one elementary principal sent me an email that said, I am overwhelmed, two hundred of my families have picked up boxes. Thank you to Angela and her team for what they did. That's what has gone on in this time in the school system. But it hasn't been easy, folks, goodness gracious. You know, we started out those first seven weeks, we were averaging, you know, a hundred and twenty-five cases. Then the next six weeks through the thirteen, it went up to forty cases. And then since Thanksgiving, it's become even more difficult. And you look at this chart, and it just shows you the increase over that period of time in confirmed cases. And so we showed you the last time we talked about this, a chart about what a confirmed case does and how it works its way through the system, and one confirmed could affect four or five schools. Here's something, since August tenth, we've had over a thousand employees who've had to quarantine due to a COVID exposure, a thousand folks. We've had two administrators out of their buildings for over thirty days because of the way quarantining worked and the exposures that they were a part of. We've managed through that. Two hundred and seventy-six of our employees, Mr. Eaton shows some of his data is GCS specific, some of it's county-specific, when he gives you the big numbers about all the pediatric numbers, that's looking at the whole county, but he can drill down and he shows you ours. And this one is really sobering to me. We've got over twenty folks that have been in the hospital. We've had, we have a person that's in rehabilitation right now. That weighs very heavy on me as an individual, I'll just have to be honest. And what folks have worked, you know, we've had to close schools. Unfortunately, Webb Street's had to close twice, but the staffs there have worked really hard. But other things have gone on at this time. You know, we have a stated goal of ninety-five percent attendance. Up until the pandemic, right on target, ninety-five point five. This year, in our first semester, ninety-one percent, but we recognize within that ninety-one percent is some folks who sign in, sign out, you know, those who can gain will gain. But what we know is it's not, as to Mr. Collier's thing, it's not all that we want it to be. There's a lot of concern about grades, you've seen articles nationally about this, well, we're no exception. Two thousand nineteen, first grading period, we had eleven percent Fs. This year, it was twenty-two percent, double. But our administrators have tried to work, tried to reach out, and they've tried to put recovery plans in. We just completed exams, we'll see that work, but we're going to end up with more remediation as a result of this. You talk about staffing and you see that impact, so prior to Thanksgiving, we were able to get our, pretty much our classes, kind of normal, because we're never able to get a hundred normal, because we're never able to get 100% subs. But we were over 90%. But since Thanksgiving, with the increase indeed, and the risk, it's down to less than 80%. So we understand, we, as we have said all along, we are this community with 4,000 employees, 30,000 kids. We reflect it. Well, it's hitting us with that. So as we go forward, what we know is the directives say K5 can come back into A, but the rest of our district must operate in either B or C. And we have been operating in C, and we will have to see what the holidays hold for us. But that's what I would share with the board, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Booker. Doc Guthrie, I think you had a question or comment?
I didn't have, I, I actually had a comment. I, first of all, I wanted to thank Mr. Eaton for his transparency and the superintendent as well. And to me, diligence means to be careful and to be persistent and to work very, very hard at what we do, how we do it. And when we had the meeting in August, I was very, very concerned about the teachers. More importantly, I was concerned about those babies, those young people, those middle school and high school students, and the teachers and their families as well. Well, now we see that teachers hopefully will be a part of that essential group that will get the vaccine, at least that's what some news programs are reporting. However, with the data, it's easy for us to listen to or look at the charts and, and determine that it may be okay. And we shouldn't take any preventative measures right now. I grew up as a country child, and as I have stated many times before, and if you are tired of hearing it, I will say it again. To have social skills. I needed to know those concepts. I needed to have that foundation in education. I know how important it is for children to have a solid learning foundation. And I know that the learning platforms that we are using will provide the means for our children to have some, if not all of that support, just not in person. And I realize how we have actually taxed our parents during this pandemic to offer their support. They have made sacrifices. They have, some of them decided to stay home. Some have decided to seek tutors because they couldn't or did not fully understand some of the concepts that needed to be taught. I saw through documents that I requested from our school media specialists, how they've worked together to collaborate with classroom teachers to make this work. And I believe from my heart that every teacher that returned to school in August was determined to make it work, to be safe, to make it healthy, a healthy environment. And our custodians, I cannot applaud you enough. However, we can't always have subs in the schools where teachers are missing. We know that our teachers would prefer to be in school. We know that they too believe that learning in person is much better than perhaps the remote. But if a family chooses to do that, so be it. But I am saying, we need to fully think about what we are doing to our community right now. We hear, we look at the data, we see, and we know that we've closed some schools. We do not know the effects that this will have after our children are home for the winter break. And what I'm getting from the remarks that were made earlier, I'm getting, let, let's just put our teachers and children back. I, I totally disagree with that right now. I totally disagree with that. Because we may not even have, and it was better to be safe right now and make sure, I asked in our last curriculum and instructional meeting, I asked the team, if we were to turn to remote learning for just a while, please don't raise hairs about it, would we be ready? And they assured us that we would. We need to think about what we have said when we talk about pushing right back into school. I think we ought to give it a couple of weeks more.
Thank you, Ms. Guthrie. Any other comments, questions, Mr. Hall?
Yeah, I have grave concerns about, if this thing's gaining strength, of everything that I've checked, talked to, I have people in my family that work in the profession, and I understand that the hospital is borderline right now. And that's concerns to me. And I agree with Doc, so, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, this is the information item. If no other questions or anything, we'll move forward with the consent agenda. So the next item is the consent agenda. There are several items on our consent agenda tonight. Please take a look at those items in the list. And when you're ready, you can make a motion or approve or.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, but I have a question once we get a second.
Okay, Mr. Collier, Ms., Ms. Cherry? Okay, any discussions? Mr. Collier?
Mr. Chair, down under the driver's education contract, if Ms. Bocknight's available, I just have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir, Ms. Collier.
First, in, in light of the email we received this afternoon or today about driver's education, have we got any other complaints about the driver's education company?
Mr. Collier, after I received the email earlier today, I did reach out to Mr. Chad Duncan, who's over our driver's education program. He has not received any additional complaints or concerns from the company. However, we did take the email concerns seriously, reached out to the company, addressed some of the parents' concerns with the company, and Mr. Duncan did follow up with the parent as well.
Thank you. This is a big contract. Can you tell us about the, the bids for the contract?
Yes, sir. I have been responsible for driver's education for over 10 years. And in the last two bids, which took this a three-year commitment to one company in the bid process, and they have been the only bidder for the last two cycles. So we have worked with them for a number of years. We've not had any complaints. They're working with us through the pandemic as we transition to online classes. That's the one issue that may be more of a challenge for parents this year because the Department of Public Instruction has limited our number of students in our face-to-face classes, I'm sorry, to our virtual classes to 25. And then they also, it's taken longer to do the behind-the-wheel training, but that's not anything in their control or ours. But they are the only bidder for the contract and have been for the last two cycles.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Bocknight. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify your right hand. And that's unanimous. Or, did you? Thank you, Dr. Bocknight, for your comments. Now it's time to move to a meeting here from our superintendent, Dr. Booker.
Thank you, members of the board. Well, first semester is over, and winter break officially begins. As you all know, today was one of our remote learning day. The state prescribed that we would have five of those in our calendar, and today was the third one of those. Want to remind our public that our school buildings are closed during the break. Central Office will have designated folks available to serve the public, except on our holidays, which are the 23rd, 24th, and 25th of December, and the 1st of January. Our teachers will return on Monday, the 4th, for a mandated workday, and then students return on the 5th. They will be followed by the distribution of report cards on the 7th. Last week, the Department of Public Instruction informed us that because of the way they would have to process exams for English II, when those report cards come out, there will be a delay in how they're evaluated. So it may be as late as the end of January before the state is allowed to give us. So parents, when you see that English II exam with an incomplete, your student didn't do anything. It was purely an issue with how the state is able to assess this. So we just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that. We talked about giving out over 200,000 masks. We're very fortunate. We were chosen as part of America's Mask Challenge, which is sponsored by the United Way Worldwide, the Business Roundtable, and the CDC Foundation. So they will be providing Hanes brand masks for students and teachers and staff at Title One schools. We will receive 157,000 masks as part of that at no charge, no shipping, nothing. They're just going to deliver them to us. So we're very pleased for that. And I mentioned in my report about winter break and winter meal boxes. So we have had more than 4,000 requests for these meal boxes. And today was the first distribution date, and there'll be another distribution date on the 28th, because each box will have food for one week for families. And this is one of the dynamic things that our school nutrition has done, is they've tried to reach out and meet the need in our community. So I appreciate the hard work that goes on there. It is posted, Ms. Chair, on our website, and I do not know off the cuff. Yes, ma'am.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Ms. Guthrie.
Mr. Chair, this question is for you. Are you going to, since school is out and our healthcare workers will not be collaborating with the Health Department, am I right?
As far as us related to COVID events, we have a process in place with the Health Department where we'll still be working with them, anything related to us, if that's what you're asking.
That's what I'm asking. So I am asking then, if that's going to be closely monitored by the Mr. Chair and the healthcare workers? And if the board needs to hear anything as it relates to a consideration of reconsidering when our students return to school from winter break, Mr. Chair, will you bring that before us?
Yes, ma'am. I will personally call each board member also.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may, sir, if you could find a half an hour in your schedule, and I know this week will be busy leading up to the 25th, but there's something that I think will boost your holiday spirit. Mr. Nensetti, who, who you all know does a lot of this work around here, has created a Sounds of the Season special for Channel 21. He took some of our involvement in past Christmas parades and tried to share back some musical performances where he had captured, we're fortunate Tom has been with the district a while, so he went through his archives and tried to pull all that with some other holiday-themed segments that he's collected over the years. There's a message in there from me on behalf of, of the board, just thanking them. And I hope this video will show people that there's still cheer in our community and that while we've missed out on these events, we can still remember and, and count on them. And we look forward to when the pandemic is behind us. I'll just say in, in closing about that, I didn't know we'd make it here, folks. And I just, I am humbled by what our folks have done. Dedication doesn't begin to describe what's gone on this year. I mean, our work is important, and our people value our work, but we got to value our people. And so what I've seen them do in the selflessness and the reaching, and when, when somebody gets into crisis, to watch them rally around a coworker, it's just so impressive. And still remember, students, we've got counselors, social workers who have gone out and just really chased down people, saying, where are they? We can't find these kids. And you saw there was a 60-minute special about it. Our numbers, we got it down to single digits in the first month. Our folks were so dedicated, and they've continued that work. We are not perfect. I understand that. But our folks have done so well to deliver instruction in so many different ways. Two weeks ago, we had a, Sean Smith, recognized nationally for digital learning and modern teacher, spoke to our teachers and just complimented them on all they've done and that the work we began with him two years ago, what they've done, he holds them up as a model. So board, you all have stood with us, our senior staff, I, I can't tell you the hours they've worked. The administrators have just, I've asked them to do things, and they've just said, we'll do our best. And they've done to meet our community's desires to have school. And so I thank everybody for what they have done. And I just hope that all of our families can be safe and healthy through this time, and that this two weeks can be restful and reflective. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Merry Christmas.
Dr. Booker, you mentioned Dr. Smith and the modern teacher. I had the opportunity to watch that webinar, and Dr. Smith asked the teachers, if you've learned one thing during this pandemic, make a note. And they began to fill the chat room, because that's what he said. And the one thing that I do believe that our teachers did learn was that diligence that Mr. Collier spoke of. And they are determined to make certain that learning is take, is going to take place, whether it be via remote or in person. And I appreciate your leadership, your skills, and your belief in your staff and in all of your personnel, because you stepped out and you believed that it could be done. And we have closed our first semester, and we do not take that lightly. We appreciate that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Guthrie, for your comment. And I'll just follow up that, Dr. Booker, with your compassion and leadership of your staff and all your teachers and all the employees of Gaston County School. We want to personally just thank each and one, each one of you for what you've done for our students and parents. You went beyond the calling of being a teacher or in education. We just appreciate everything you've done. So I just want to thank you again, and everyone in this room, and everyone out on the TV. Before I call for a closed session, we have a birthday girl, her name's Dot Cherry. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Hall.
I'd like to thank Dr. Booker and his staff, too. I know him and from, for a long time. I know they work very hard, they're very dedicated. I don't say much, but I just, I just got to say that to you. I have a lot of faith and confidence in you and your staff. And, you know, I don't, I just won't, I just had to say that. I don't say much, but that's what I'm going to say.
Anyone else? Any other comments? Okay, yeah, I just want to recognize Dot Cherry, she turned 50 today. But happy birthday, Dot. Now, the next agenda, I need a motion to go ahead and, and to close session for personnel, school safety plans, and consult with our attorney. Mr. Collier?
Mr. Chair, if I may, I'd like a motion to go into closed session under North Carolina General Statute 143-318 dot 11, Paragraph A6 for personnel, same statute, Par- Paragraph A8 for school safety plans, and same statute and Paragraph A3 for consultation with attorney in order to consult with the board's attorney and protect the attorney-client privilege and to receive advice with respect to the lawsuit caption, 19-CVS-319 Solomon et al. versus Gaston County Board of Education et al. And 19-CVS-3893 McKinney et al. versus Goins and the Gaston County Board of Education and any other legal matters.
Thank you. Any second, Mr. Moore? All in favor? Signify, that's unanimous, and we're going into closed session. Thank you. We're back in open session. I'll turn it over to Dr. Booker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I would. Thank you. Mr. Chair, members of the board, I would recommend a two-year contract for Jonathan Craig Short to serve as an administrator in Gaston County Schools.
Ms. Cherry, I'd like to move to approve.
Second, Ms. Cherry. Any discussions? All in favor? Is unanimous?
Thank you, members of the board. Just to remind you all, we've had two retirements going to effect as of the close of our first semester. Laura Dixon, after serving for over thirty years in our system, retired, and we are fortunate that the assistant principal there will serve in an interim capacity for the rest of the year. So Laura Clark will serve in the interim capacity there. And the individual you just authorized a contract for will take the place of Chad Carper at W.C. Friday, who announced his retirement in his last day, at the end of the calendar year. And so, we will work to get Mr. Short in place, and he will serve as the principal at W.C. Friday for the remainder of this year.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Booker. I just wanted to give an update. We're looking forward to our next scheduled meeting, which is currently scheduled for a retreat in January twenty-twenty-one, and I'll probably send out either fifteenth or twenty-second. I'll get the feedback from Dana. Mr. Dedman?
So we're not going to leave on the twenty-first, right? Because that's March twenty-second.
No, yeah, no. We'll be...
He said the retreat's not going to be on the fifteenth, it's going to be on the next weekend.
We haven't made that decision yet, but we will this week.
I'd like to make a question that we...
Second.
Second. All in favor? Please raise your right hand. Merry Christmas to each and every one of you. Thank you for your dedication. Good night.